My intention today is to, as I told you, dive into the document, the Aragon Jury document, to use it as a baseline for our terms document. We can preview that and extract whatever information we think that we can use on our own terms for the hatching phase. Remember that the terms for the association are already written and finished, hopefully, and I can share them with you if you want to. And distractions, I have no distractions today, so I'm ready to dive in. I'll pass it to Jake.
Hi. My intention is this is the first legal I've ever gotten to make, so I'm just here to check out what goes on. Distractions, actually, I'm doing pretty good today. We'll see how that goes. And I'll pass it to Griff.
I don't know why, it doesn't matter what he says, I just laugh constantly. Anyway, yeah, I'm excited for our work session. This is really good. My intentions are to hack on this hash document. Santi and I are battling over this like opportunity to build this document, so you know, it looks like he's winning. Anyway, and then distractions, I don't think I have any distractions other than I can't access, the edit link for the hash terms is not, it's only view only. And I will pass it to Zoptimus.
Thanks Griff. My intention for the call is like every week, catch up and see what's going on in here because it helps me to understand better and I'm also doing the recording and no distractions. And I'll pass it to Anya.
Oh Anya, we can't hear you. Oh, there it is. More like listen. You hear me now? I haven't really changed anything, so I don't know. Thumbs up, you hear me? Okay. Right, so my intention is to listen, to see where we are at. I haven't really had the time to check in this week so far, so I'm probably just going to be listening a lot and then providing my comments at the end. And no distractions whatsoever. I had all distractions on Wednesday, so I'll put it successfully. Oh, my camera is not on. And who do I have to go back to? Tonga?
I think Tonga is the one missing, the only one missing.
Yeah, intentions, just learn mostly and yeah, see. I will be paying close attention to the things that might be limiting for us in the future, so. But before doing that, I have to understand a little bit, so yeah, mostly listen. And distractions, uh, yeah, if my internet works off, that is not also distracting, but also annoying. But I hope it doesn't, so yeah. I'll pass it to Santi.
Great, thank you. Griff, I changed that link. Can you please share your screen? Because I'm always having issues with sharing my screen. Can you share your screen with the agenda document and all the links are there? I switched the link, so hopefully the one that points to the draft document is opening now. So as you, as the ones that have been coming to the meetings know, and for the new ones, basically what we are, we have been doing here is discussing lately on the latest meetings, the terms of the association, of becoming a member of the association, of the Common Stack Association. You all know that every one of us who's on the hatching phase will have to be a member of the association. And that was what we were discussing the other day. The terms are on, I think there is a link on the agenda that points to the document on the terms. I uploaded it to my Google Drive, so if anyone wants to take a look at that, that's fine. Now, what we're going to be discussing today is the terms for the hatching phase. That is the document that everyone will be agreeing upon when they purchase TEC tokens, alright? So before purchasing TEC tokens, you will have to be a member of the association. After, when you want to finally purchase the tokens, you will be faced with the document that we're going to start working today. And that will be your acceptance of those terms, okay? So that's the hatching phase terms. So what I've done here is I downloaded the Aragon document, the one that they have uploaded, and it's, there's a PDF link on the agenda. And I basically just highlighted all the points that are there. And to start making it maybe a little easier, because there is, of course, there are some parts there that don't apply to us. And, but I wanted to start maybe from the very bottom, the last point where it states all the risks that they point out whenever someone is joining the, what will be the TEC commons for us. And make sure that we go over those and agree if we have to keep them or we can add some more, or we can delete some of codes. So Griff, can you just scroll down that document all the way to, oh, hold on. Okay. Yeah, those are the risks and warranties. I was trying to put everything a little bit nicer, but I didn't have time to finish. So let's start with the first one and we can review them all together and maybe stop after each one and have some discussions, anyone who can join.
Can you make it editable? Both of them are still not editable.
Sure, sure.
Just the share button and then at the bottom here, you can change it from view to, you can make it comment or edit however you want to play. I like comment personally, then everyone gets to see their good work. They get credit.
Hold on, I'm having issues with this. I think my internet is starting to get.
Oh no, I think, oh no, no.
No, no, it's still not. Let me close some stuff here and.
You can, if you kill Discord dude, Discord is the, it's the greedy.
Yeah, but how do I kill Discord if we're talking on Discord?
I know, yeah. Dude, yeah. But I'll tell you, like Discord, these calls, especially if I'm like streaming, sharing the screen or something, it's like the whole rest of the computer ground still holds.
Let's see. Let me give you rights. Can we, can we just, can you just read while I'll try to give you rights? Read the first one and we can.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so representations and warranties dot risks. You represent and warrant that you understand the blockchain technology and TEC are new and untested and outside our exclusive control. And adverse changes in market forces or the technology broadly construed will excuse our performance and TEC's performance under these terms. Yeah, that sounds good. Any comments on that? I think we can keep going. You represent and warrant that you understand, oh, sorry. I thought I heard someone say something. I was wrong. Okay. You represent and warrant that you understand these terms, the mechanism, TEC, and especially how the bonding curve works. Well, that won't be there.
Well, that mechanism where it, that mechanism where it is basically they have on the initial articles of the document, they describe the mechanism as the way, they refer to GitHub as the way Aragon Jury works. I don't know if we're going to have a document explaining how our bonding curve and our, if we do, we can understand that mechanism as our instruction guide or our description or how, the document that we will have which explains how the augmented bonding curve plus DAO works.
The, I think the important thing that we have to remember is that for the hash DAO, there is no bonding curve. So, and the truth is that we, there is no guarantee that there will ever be a bonding curve. If the people that come into the TEC don't vote to upgrade to a bonding curve, then there will never be a bonding curve. There will only be this DAO that people put money into. So for the hash terms, at least, we should scrub everything about a bonding curve.
Get it out. I think you should, you should have rights already. Or at least highlight it in red, so we already know that we want to get that out of there.
Yes, I have the power. Well, let's see. I don't know how to spell dandelion. You represent and warrant that you are the sole owner of the wrapped X dyes that you will use to obtain the TECs or that you have enough authority that you have gathered from the corresponding organizations. Furthermore, you represent and warrant that you are fully aware and understand you may lose your TECs or other asset that you may stake. So, yeah, I think we might, this isn't for certain yet, so leave this as a comment, but we might end up calling it TEC hash tokens as there will actually.
They won't be the final ones, they won't be the final ones.
Yeah, it seems like on the tech side, there's going to be like an upgrade of all the money that is raised in the hash DAO will just go to a new DAO as opposed to adding these things into, adding those features into this current DAO, so it'll be easier to just.
And the stake, right, and the staking bar doesn't have cents on there, right?
Actually, it does. Well, we can say stake or deposit.
Deposit, yeah, maybe deposit. Although I don't even want to use deposit as the word, I mean.
A deposit, I believe is used in this all over the place. Oh, that you made deposit, maybe it's only used in a few places. Deposition, that's kind of a.
And it implies a strict financial, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like staking is.
I did specifically, well, you know what, and staking, I guess I'd be curious to hear Anya's thought on this. So there's staking and there's depositing. If, if, if someone is putting money into the TEC and they're getting tokens back in return for that, for those funds. And in the end, they actually lose a percentage of their funds, they get diluted by issuance of other tokens. So maybe they put in 100 RAP X dye and they get 100 tokens back, but TEC hash tokens. But then free TEC hash tokens are minted, so their TEC hash tokens only have power over 80% of that, let's say 80 X dye. Would you say that they deposited or they staked?
Griff, I actually agree. I forgot your name, sorry, but I don't want to call you freedoms.
Jake. Jake.
Okay, Jake. I kind of agree. I mean, if we're going to be using the word deposit, that brings financial obligations, possibly. And the word staking implies that we are staking our assets, which the way you describe it, it's probably better to use the word staking. Yeah, I would avoid the word deposit just for the financial reasons. It doesn't resemble that we are actually having financial obligations here.
Sounds good. And there was another one.
Well, the way you actually explained it now, I mean, if I'm providing some funds through this association, to the organization, and I'm getting like membership to the exchange, even though there's a certain percentage that goes into the reserve fund, I'm actually becoming, or this might be perceived as a membership fee.
Yeah. That's true, and it would make sense, right? Like the people who are getting the membership fee are the Impact Hours people. But at the same time, the big challenge is the TEC will not have a legal entity explicitly. The TEC hash DAO will just be its own. It'll be relatively, it'll only be made up of people who are members of the Common Stack Association. So there's a little bit of something going on there. But then the goal of this document is to say, even though you're members of the Common Stack Association, you're acting as individuals and the decisions that you make as individuals will only be representative of you as an individual, not of the Common Stack Association.
And also, I would add that also, who may receive tokens after the hatching, they will be, well, no, they will be buying against the bonding curve. They won't have the split, yeah, but they will also have the split between the funding reserve and the funding curve reserve. And they won't be signing these terms, they may sign some other terms, but not these specific ones because they won't be members of the association, of the Common Stack Association. They will just be anyone who wants to buy the token and join the DAO.
If that happens. Now, of course, we're all hoping that it will, but.
Oh yeah, if that happens, if that happens, of course.
Okay.
Okay, should we move to the next one?
Furthermore, you, well, wait, let me see, you represent, yeah, TECs, so you've gathered enough authority. Furthermore, you represent and warrant that you are fully aware and understand that you may lose your TECs or assets that you staked and that you do not depend on them and are prepared to do so. I mean, do so, what is that? Furthermore, you acknowledge that you have been, oh, sorry, is there anything on this one?
Just with regard to the previous point B, lose them, I mean, one cannot simply just lose the tokens.
They can be hacked.
Right, so. I mean, are we, okay.
But isn't, are you meaning like, because if you can lose them, then that means you had something of value to begin with? Is that what you were talking about? Like you lose something of value? Like, aren't we trying to like stay away from them having something like that? And this is just us taking part in this?
Well, there is value because at least you'll be able to vote. No matter if they are, if they have monetary value or not, they will give you a right to vote. And that's already a value.
Okay, but I thought the intrinsic value is the only one that like really gets people's eyebrows.
I wonder if there is like some type of insurance company that can maybe bring some security for the people that put in money. Like the contracts are audited sometimes, but I don't know.
I don't know if there is, but in any case, it won't be the TEC because there is no legal entity behind the TEC. So it would have to be every single one of us who wanted to assure their assets and do it on their own, you know, responsibility, not on behalf of the TEC. Because there is no way the TEC can sign any contract because there is no entity behind it.
Yeah. Okay, let's keep going. Furthermore, furthermore, you acknowledge that you have been informed of the following risks associated to the use of TEC. Let's just save that. Which you agree to take at your sole responsibility. Risk associated with Ethereum's malfunction, TEC, Ethereum's malfunction or TEC on X-Dive blockchain?
What about and, and/or?
Good. As such, any malfunction unintended function or unexpected functioning of the X-Dive protocol may cause TEC's malfunction or function in an unexpected or unintended manner. Anything on that?
No.
Risk of unfavorable regulatory action in one or more jurisdictions. I will get rid of this. The functioning and usage of the Ethereum network associated blockchains, are these all their own?
No, they are different, they should be different ones, yeah, yeah, go ahead and put them on different.
I think, I think this is just one. I can't tell if the formatting is going to be correct here or not, but. The functioning and usage of the Ethereum networks associated blockchain, networks and digital assets such as. C. Thank you.
Okay.
The functioning and usage of the Ethereum network associated, let's say X-Dive network. Associated blockchain networks and digital assets such as the TEC, the TEC hash tokens and X-Dive network could be impacted by regulatory inquiries. Anything on that? I think that's pretty good.
That's clear.
Risk of theft and hacking, hackers or other groups or other organizations may attempt to interfere with.
Do you have an editable link? Because I can actually help you. Pushing this all together.
Anya, let me, let me share it with you on the, on the channel, on the tech channel.
Yeah, and if you can edit access, I can share the link as well if you're having troubles.
Cool. Thanks.
I posted it on the text one.
So, you know, one thing I've just been kind of doing is calling this the TEC hash DAO. Are you guys down with that, that framing? Like that, calling this first, this first part the TEC hash DAO? Does that sound good?
There is a, on the agenda, Griff, there is a link to the diagram. We can share real quick, so everyone absolutely is aligned with the part of the process that we're working on.
Yeah, the pre-hash, ah, no wait. So people put money in, they get TEC tokens in return. Once we hit the minimum cap, then, if we don't hit the minimum cap at the end of the time period, then they all get their dye back percent. If they do, if we do hit the minimum cap, then TEC is minted for Impact Hours people. This, there is an optional thing where some funding may go to the funding pool and be taken as not possible to be refunded and it's like a forced, it's like a forced donation. And that's a parameter that we will decide and it could be set to zero though. And although maybe it'll be set to like 5%, who knows? And then when the proposal, when that hatch has succeeded, then the people with TEC tokens will have the option to vote to migrate to a new DAO. And then there will be a new DAO here and this would be the actual Token Engineering Commons. And this would be the Token Engineering Commons hash DAO.
So what we're, what we're dealing with are with the terms of this first DAO. The terms that you will sign when you purchase your TEC tokens on that second step. When you put your dye, you're, actually it will be your RAP D.I. and you get your, your TEC tokens.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that we'll rename them TEC H tokens because we don't, it's mostly as a safety thing, like I'm not sure if we'll continue to, those tokens might still exist or something and people might think, oh, I have TEC commons tokens. You know, but really they're TEC.
Right, right, right.
TEC hash tokens, so. Probably want to give them a different name, anyway. So hackers or other groups or organizations may attempt to interfere with the X-Die shut-in. X-Dive blockchain. The TEC hash DAO or your wallet or your assets staked. In any number of ways, including without limitation, denial, service attacks, civil tax spoofing, smurfing. I don't even know what that is. All our attacks are consensus-based attacks. Furthermore, the Ethereum blockchain is susceptible to lending attacks.
Hey Griff.
Yeah?
Is there any way, I mean, X-Die is a sidechain. Is it susceptible to flash loans?
There, I don't believe there are flash loans on X-Die yet, but.
For sure there will be, there will be for sure.
Yeah, we should, we should definitely add it. There's just no, there's not very many protocols on X-Die yet that really offer that service. But we should, we should add it.
Everyone's, everyone's aware here what the flash loan is.
I don't know, it would be nice if someone explained.
Can you, can you give an explanation, Jake?
I'll do my best. Okay, do you know what arbitrage is? Probably not. Okay. Okay. So in DeFi, you know, we have a lot of lending. So like AVE is a lending space against, like, so you can put, you can stake. Oh man, okay. Okay, you know, like you get it in your head, but then you got to like explain it to somebody. So if I have a bunch of crypto, I have a bunch of dye, I don't want to get rid of it. I, I don't want to get rid of it. I can send it to compound and I can borrow against it. At a rate that they'll, you know, they come up with or whatever I agree to. They'll lend me a bunch of, well, they could give me a bunch of compound tokens or I could get die or I could borrow AVE. And then I can send that back over to another. Uh, lending protocol and use that to borrow back. And say I borrow F then. And then at the same time, I use that F to pay back my loan and then say F went up. Then I would have made money on my, on my loan and then I use that to pay that back off and then close the other one. And I basically take money from people. That didn't really make sense, did it?
It's okay. I mean, let, let me give a, a very practical example that happened to Maker Dow. So Maker Dow had a vote about passing some proposal that would send. Dude, that would do something, right? I think change a parameter or something. And. On the last block where that vote was supposed to happen, someone did a flash loan. Where without having to have any collateral, they, uh, borrowed a bunch of M K R tokens. Voted to pass this proposal. And then, uh, sent the M K, and then at the end of the, um, that transaction. Returned the M K R tokens back to Maker Dow and, uh, to the loaning contract. And they just had to pay a small fee on having unlimited Maker Dow tokens for that one transaction. So because they were just able to borrow M K R, they could pass proposals that you wouldn't have expected would pass. Now with conviction voting, we make that very difficult, but with dandelion voting. That could be possible. Now, it's not possible for us because we have non-transferable tokens. There will be no giant pool of tokens that people, people could borrow against. And the token will not have flash loans integrated. There are tokens that, token contracts that straight up say. Yeah, anyone can loan against this and this DAO will receive a percentage of interest. Like it's crazy, you know, uh, uh, the. Infinite liquidity, uh, and in governance, it's really risky. But we should, I, I can't imagine these problems, uh, except for maybe future. Like when we make the token non-transferable and Ave or some other organization decides to. Pool T E C tokens that you could borrow, do flash loans with. Anyway.
Thanks for the explanation. Looks scary though, but thanks, thanks both of you.
Very scary.
Well, sooner or later, we'll have them in, in X Dye for sure. So we gotta be prepared on that document.
Yeah, and I think it's fair, uh, I think it's fair to have. Uh, okay, so one other thing here is they, A N J was made on Ethereum and X Dye is a. Is more, right now it's a proof of authority chain. But it will upgrade to. This very different consensus mechanism eventually called like honey badger, um. Byzantine fault tolerance, honey badger protocol or something like that. Can't remember what they call it. So I'm just gonna say other consensus attacks. And I do think because we are bridged to X, to Ethereum, we should always leave the Ethereum blockchain stuff in here too. Because who knows, die could be attacked on Ethereum and then. That affects X Dye, which affects us. Ooh, thank you, Anya.
I have a question, uh, can the DAO go in debt?
If there's a loaning protocol, uh, i- if this DAO was on, hmm, on Maker, for instance. Then absolutely, it could send, it could put. Well, Maker is over collateralized, so technically it's never really in debt. Like you're not in debt.
It's, except when there's a big market, except when there's a big market deep.
Yeah. I mean, you know, this is a little bit existential or whatever, maybe exaggeration, but technically. The DAO, the, a bonding curve DAO is always in debt. Right? Like, they have the market cap illusion, so your bonding curve DAO might have a market cap of. Five hundred K and it looks like there's, you know, different people that hold five hundred thousand dollars worth of. You know, your token, but you only have, let's say a hundred thousand dollars bonding curve. So is that DAO in debt? Right? You, you have, you could say that it has five hundred K of liabilities. And only a hundred K on its, um, balance sheet.
But I, I mean, in a practical sense, like, let's say there is. Five hundred dollars, five hundred die in the funding pool and then one proposal. Uh, requests three hundred and another proposal requests three hundred. So they are both technically under. The value that is available by the time of submitting, but what if they both pass? Then how would the contract react if there is like a hundred die missing?
In, in conviction voting, uh, there's two.
And correct me if I'm wrong. I think, I think that due to conviction voting, the threshold. Uh, mechanism wouldn't allow, uh, it would, it would make it very difficult to, to pass. Because, uh, it will consider the amount of money left on the, on the, on the funding pool and the amount of money that, uh. Both proposals were requiring and it would, it would adjust the thresholds on a way that it would make it. Very, very hard.
Exactly. In, in, in Ethereum blockchain, every transaction happens one at a time and it updates the state. The global state, so if that first, if it was even possible for the three hundred die transaction to go through. Which I don't think it will be, because I think that we'll have a, uh, there's one parameter that's like. What is the most money that can be dished out by this DAO at one time? And that will likely be less than fifty percent. Um, I, I can't imagine we would pick a parameter more than fifty percent for that. So as in you could only ever spend, you know, forty percent of the pool in one trans, in one proposal. But anyway, let's say that we have these two proposals that are each three hundred and five hundred Diane. When the first, they can't pass at the same time. So when the first proposal passes, that changes the requirements. Uh, of the funding pool to pass the second one. And it would say, nope, this other one can't pass.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
What about if a proposal, um, actually has installments and we all vote on yes? Then a team is going to get those installments, like every single month, there's going to be almost like a paycheck or something. Then three months later, there's not enough funds. Would that be considered that or how's that actually? Uh, happening through a smart contract?
It would. I would say conviction voting doesn't have the power to make that kind of agreement.
Okay.
But it could, it could, without funding it in total at the beginning. And then being like, if you don't do this, this smart contract will send the money back to the funding pool. If that makes sense. So you could do that agreement, but you'd have to ask for the full amount upfront. But I think social debt is a thing. You know, like having an understanding, I think we're gonna have a, what I would say is we will have a lot of proposals like that. For like all these groups that are doing DAO operations. Like the gravity group who's like, hey, we want to do conflict management for, for this, for the T E C for the next year. But we're gonna ask for like the first three months now. And then after two months, we're gonna ask for the next three months. And then after two, after three months, we're gonna ask for the next three months, you know, and like. They will be continually asking for more money, so.
Makes sense.
Ethereum blockchain, X Dye blockchain is susceptible to mining. I like Jakes and or work consensus attacks, including the mountain to. Mining power packs, something. And risk conditions, any successful attacks present a risk to the T E C hash now, your wallet, your assets staked in the T E C hash now.
I would say any bridge, not just the X Dye bridge, any X Dye bridge, because there may be more than one.
There are. And in. I like how they throw the Ethereum foundation on another part here. Might as well keep that, keep that going.
Griff, is this document going to have like an explanation sheet where all these abbreviations are explained?
Uh, like T E C? I just assumed T E C would be explained up here higher.
Oh, I mean, like all the rest, like X Dye breach contracts, PoA. Including T, T, T C hatch doll, stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, PoA, PoA network.
Sorry, Anya, do you, do you think we should?
Yeah, I think it would be useful. Just to kind of nail it down. Yeah, because there, I mean, you, you kind of hear that this is the explanation that was valid in times of the creation of the terms. And if that changes, then you know, you're safe because at least at that time, this is how we explained it.
Okay, maybe we can put links.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, PoA network is the, uh, equivalent of the Ethereum foundation for X Dye. And I don't think, I actually think that it's PoA and, or PoA sometimes they call it. Um. And I don't think they even, uh, in their legal doc, I, I'm not sure, but I don't think that this is an abbreviation technically. So like, maybe we can just comment on prod, things that need to be defined.
Well, we definitely have to review that. Yeah, just leave that comment there and we'll have to go over it.
Risk of known or novel money attacks. Exists. Money attacks as described. Maybe impacting the rest of security.
Should we change the deck hatch and just leave the deck? Oh no, this is the hatch, right? This is the hatch, right, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think honestly. Yeah, we should like, I almost feel like everything should be tech hatched out and the T E C doesn't exist.
Okay. Yeah, right at this, at this moment, T E C doesn't exist, right?
Yeah. Just the T E C hatch down, which obviously in its name will hope to birth the T E C. But. Can't guarantee that. Which will have to explicitly state for sure, but that's not, that's not what we're working on now. Risk of security weakness in Argon Court, there is, oh. What do you guys feel about the, I don't know, you know, ever since the DAO, I've been naming everything the. No, we should get rid of that. Is it just T E C hatch now?
Doesn't make any difference?
No, but we gotta pick one.
Hmm. Just get rid of the.
Yeah.
But did you just propose to eliminate the word DAO?
Oh, no, the word the.
Okay.
Should we get rid of the word DAO?
Oh, I mean, well, that, that was when you suggested and I was like, what? Why? That would be interesting, yeah.
Could just be T E C.
Do you want to mark all these clauses with H? And further on with letters?
Yeah, probably we want to.
Yeah, I don't have edit access, so it looks ugly if I do it.
Let me try to do so, Anya. Let's see if I can.
Who is we?
We?
Like, who is writing this document?
T E C.
The T E C.
But T E C doesn't exist, right?
Yeah.
It's a non-entity, so then it can't be liable.
Well, it can be liable. Every individual ends up being liable. In the jurisdiction that they're in, you know, I mean, this is the general partnership thing. So we could, we could be the common stack associate.
Hmm. If you think that. That would. Protect us a little, you know, and make things easier or make things better.
Well, I just don't know. I don't know if anyone has the authority to speak on behalf of the T C, um.
That's the beauty of it. Maybe that's why we won.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
That is something even hard, not necessarily for legal stuff. It's like sometimes how, how for telling people you need to tell them we.
I'd be curious if, uh, Lawrence or, um, Marina or Anya have a thought on this we? If we should just say it's the common stack association that's releasing this? Or do we say it's the T E C hatch down that is re- releasing itself?
Um, I don't know, that's a good question. Uh. Let me, let me take a look at the, the DX DAO terms and conditions.
Oh, yeah. Cause did Gnosis launch DX Dow? I mean, obviously they did, but did they say they did?
No, 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 they didn't. That's the, that's the thing, they didn't, um, and I think that would be better. You know, that the DAO did. Itself.
The DAO is launching itself, which can, the, the, the DAO. The DAO or the terms?
Yeah. The DAO wrote the terms.
Quantum computers is even being called out. You shall understand. Okay.
There we go, Tonga. Your assets are completely uninsured.
Yep. There are risks associated with the use of the.
There, there are risk of leaving, which should add. Well, we're calling to the hour and as you said, this is a, a long document that we just started hacking today. And, um, so I'd love if anyone doing, uh, first of all, we're not gonna have another meeting until. The first week of January. Next week is Christmas, uh, Friday, next Friday is Christmas Day and the other Friday is, uh, New Year's, uh, Day. So we won't meet, uh, until the, the other week on, on January the eighth. So, uh, if anyone wants to dive in and put their comments or where, you know, you're welcome to, more than welcome to, and we will. We will keep discussing the document on, on, on the next session next year.
Yeah, awesome.
Anyone wants to add anything here before we?
The, the only thing I would add is this is the main deliverable that we, for the hatch. And then there will be like other terms that we want to make sure are also there. But, uh, this is the main one, so.
Are we gonna have, uh, Coach Vivi review this?
We can, we can ask him to review it once we have it done, just to make sure. I mean, I don't think it'll be a big deal as long as, um, like the very wise, um, you know, uh, Anya, Marina. Everyone said the TEC DAO, Hatch DAO is launching itself. So technically the Common Stack Association, I mean, I think we will need to explicitly. This is not the Common Stack Association and that. Uh, also that yes, only members of the Common Stack Association are allowed to participate, but. Uh, I don't think, and then make that explicitly clear, then we should definitely make sure he reviews that piece.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, I think, uh, do we, um, we can make a final round if anyone wants to add anything here? On what we're starting to do, we started to do today?
Uh, oh, like around? Uh, well, thank you, Sam. Great, 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 uh, work session. Very excited to transition the work sessions over research. I'll pass it to Jake.
Yeah, this was fun, Santi. I'm gonna keep looking at this anyways and bother Griff about it, cause that just sounds like fun. Uh, other than that, yeah, cool. All right, happy holidays. Merry Christmas. Have a good one.
I'll pass it to.
Wanna pass it to anyone?
Oh, yeah.
I think.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Anya. I, I apologize.
No, don't worry. Um, yeah, great fun going to be bothering you as well. Um, I like this development. It's some more structure and it's sure going to be fun working on it, even though there's going to be holidays. But yeah, happy holidays, everybody. I'll pass it to Marina.
So interesting that this is fun for so many of you. But yeah, happy holidays to everyone.
I did, I did act that you're not gonna work on it, Marina.
I'm not promising, I don't know. Maybe I will.
No promises here, no need to. All right, Zep Timus.
Thank you. I think that was a great call and yeah, it's, it's looking amazing. Like everyone is enjoying it, so it's awesome. Uh, happy holidays to everyone. And I'll pass it to Dr. Love.
Lawrence, are you there?
Yes, um, I think the fundamental problem is that the Argon terms and conditions have a lot of low prob- probability events. So it actually, you know, obscures all the major issues with a lot of minor details, in my opinion.
But do you think it's an issue to add them?
I mean, the, the main thing is that this is an agreement between each and every member. And the basic rules that we basically agree to abide by the, um. By the codified bylaws and the transaction logic as implemented on the blockchain. The details of that can be described in specific, um, terms of service attached to each, um, token.
Okay, okay. Okay, that would make things easy, that would make things easier, that, that's for sure, just. Avoid adding all those details on the document and just imply them on the usage of the token.
No, I mean, I, I think Lawrence is saying that we need to actually talk about the real meat. Which is like, oh, Impact Hours people are going to get these funds, you know, they're gonna get free tokens while if you put, put money in, you don't. You know, you, you're actually, your collateral is being held by those guys. You know, there, there is no, you know, we're gonna have to vote and, you know, the dandelion DAO will have. And vote requirements, there's, we have manage expectations. You know, there, there may not be a future upgrade of this DAO. And, you know, that's you up to you, uh, and different rules like that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we still, we still have to go through all that. We started with the very bottom of the document because, because we wanted to go through the risks. But we have to work on all that.
Um, who else? Tonga?
Yeah, uh, just happy holidays to everyone. And yeah, thank you for all the work. See ya.
Well, I thank you all for joining. I think I'm the last one. I thank you all for joining. And I wish you a great Christmas and wait, uh, days off, those who are gonna be taking them. And I hope to see you back, uh, next year with, uh, some more, uh, uh, strength to work on these legal documents and get them done. Thank you all for joining.